Twenty-third. I guess we'll have to back up. Anything tomorrow is my agenda says twenty-second. Anyway, welcome to the council meeting on August twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. We welcome our planning commission. Members that are eligible candidates tonight for some training. Appreciate them being with us. We'll start our meeting tonight by asking council member extra. Give us a thought and invitation and then lead us in the pledge of allegiance. That's my brush.
Even with an invitation. Dear Heavenly Father, we're so very grateful to be gathered together as leadership and citizens and fellow members of the community. We're so grateful for the beautiful place that we are have the privilege to live. We're grateful for the beautiful mountains and for the lovely surroundings and wonderful friends and neighbors that occupy this area. We're so grateful for our country and for the freedoms that affords us. Please help us to be wise stewards over them that we may be able to preserve our freedoms as best we can. Please bless our hearts so they will be open and receptive to wonderful ideas and possibilities. Please bless us with an extra outpouring of thy spirit that we may be able to be inspired, directed, and guided. And we ask thee for thy attendance in these proceedings that we may be able to have a spirit of love, compassion, and understanding toward one another. And say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to excuse council member Barker. He will be doing this later, but he's engaged in his taxation. You should be here with us as we answer our agenda in council meeting. Hi, we have train regarding financing methods for public improvements. Scott, would you like to introduce?
Benji's not here yet. Here he is just in time.
Thanks very much. Glad to be here. Sorry about that. I didn't know if you're walking around in the room. I want to just make sure I'm fine. There's time now. Well, for everyone else who's here, I would just be comfortable and take your check. I've been known to put people to sleep pretty well. Happy to be here. Would love to talk to you today about public infrastructure and tax income financing. If that's not enough to bore you, a couple of slides and some thoughts at the beginning about where we are and why we would need public infrastructure districts and tax income financing. So first, really to understand what's happening in Utah right now. How the growth is occurring, where Utah going in relation to other states? I don't know how well you can see that. Because there's no way to blow that. But as you can see, you've got Utah really leading essentially the nation in growth. You've got a lot of this coming from originally was from natural increase. If you look back in two thousand eleven, where that has shifted now in twenty twenty, we are almost half natural increase and half. It's coming from integration from incoming residents of other states. Particularly during COVID times, Washington, Oregon, California, significant growth into Utah from those states. That has slowed up a little bit in the last couple of months or last half year. But you're seeing that Utah just continues to have this significant income and growth. For the next slide. And this will show you a little bit more where the counties are growing. Anything that's in green there just lets you know is positive growth. Anything that's in purple, you're seeing these countries lose people from twenty twenty to twenty-one. This same trend has continued into twenty twenty-two. They haven't released that census data yet in map form. But you can see all of Utah really essentially being green. You have a couple of those easternmost counties that have had some losses. And then the map on the right that shows you specifically, they lost five people in Garfield. You can see how, you know, those small counties did not gain a lot of people. But if you look at Utah County, Salt Lake County, and then, you know, of interest to you, a certain Weber, about three thousand people there, Davis. That is really where you're seeing substantial growth, really within the kind of the five county area between Cash, Weber, Davis, Salt Lake, Utah. Very slow growth through Wasatch and seven counties, even though they had significant, you know, our newspaper articles about how quickly they're growing, nothing like the growth that's in the other counties.
Ben?
Yeah.
That's a good question, really. Is that households or individuals?
This is households.
Seemed a little bit more reasonable.
We go to the next slide. This is going to be hard to see, but just, and the lines here will tie to the problem that we have here in Utah. And so if you look at the very bottom line, we're running from left to right here, is net housing units in Utah over the last, almost ten years here. And then if you look at the darker blue line that slopes up a little bit, this is cumulative and this is the population change. And then yellow is the population change or the two mean jobs. And then if you see the median home value is that orange that spikes there. And what we were trying to show here is that we had all this incoming growth, new households being created, new jobs coming in. And what rate of growth they've been over time in comparison to each other and what has happened in median home values. So we've had remarkable job growth, remarkable population growth, and median homes have skyrocketed, particularly in relation to the housing supply there. So this is where you're getting a huge changes in housing prices. This is where you get the disconnect between what is, what's what's affordable. And this is really what's driving the conversation in Utah. Do we have enough housing starts? Or be, what are we doing to mitigate the cost of construction? Are there other economic development tools that we can use to help offset this problem here? So we'll go to the next, next slide. This just shows the, what types of residential units are built in Utah over the last couple of years. If you scroll down just a tiny bit, you can see that apartments are the lower blue, your townhomes and single-family detached. There certainly has been an increase in townhomes and apartments, but you can see we're from single, single family detached perspective, we're still building almost just as many, which is not the same percentage. We should probably put percentages on here. But you get a lot of communities that will push back and say, too many townhomes, too many apartments. And here's the graph that will help either support or you know, those towns or give you evidence here that we are building more units in Utah. We are trying to overcome some of this housing crunch by increasing supply, but ultimately we're still short. A healthy market is supposed to be ten months of available supply. So that means if we were to stop construction today, we could have, for the next ten months, all the incoming people who want to buy homes, there'd be enough supply for them to buy the home. Any guesses on what our supply is right now?
Six weeks.
Yeah, it's five, six weeks. And so we're significantly short. We're about thirty thousand housing units, some places say closer to forty thousand units short. As you can see, forty thousand, we anticipated to build almost fifty thousand in twenty twenty-two. So we're, we're getting to that point where we, that's what we need to build each year to to manage that incoming population, both again, the natural growth, just the natural growth and the immigration is coming in. Okay, now shift gears and talk about what's happening in retail. In the year two thousand, most communities were built at about twenty-five square feet per capita of retail space. So for everyone in your community, you would say, all right, we need twenty-five square feet. This would include your grocery stores and the restaurants and some of your quantity retail uses like, I mean, like a haircut place would certainly fit in there, nail salon and the dollar store and all these different places, about twenty-five square feet per capita. Now, this would differ from different cities depending upon your tourism components. Park City naturally have a lot more retail because they have only seven thousand people live there and tourists. St. George is a little bit different, is drive-through traffic, but for the most part, most cities along the Wasatch front, try to use our twenty-five square feet per capita. And by twenty seventeen, that shifted down to where we really only needed about twenty square feet. And this is because of the rise of online shopping, more people doing their shopping at home. And developers felt like we are overbuilt. And this is why you would see in the, you know, twenty seventeen time period, these comp USAs and Best Buy, you know, retail centers that are vacant, you've got these big boxes that are not going to be filled, the Kmart, Sears, Chase and Penny, and all these different centers that ultimately were sitting vacant. And then you jump to twenty twenty-two, which this is, you know, partially pandemic influence, fifteen square feet per capita. So if you look at just the current population of the city that's thirty-five thousand, and what are you about twenty nineteen, twenty thousand, twenty hundred? So if you're saying thirty-five thousand, if all things equal, if that population was static in two thousand, you would need eight hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. Today, you would need five hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. So you have two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of access retail space there that just simply is not going to be absorbed because we're shopping different and we have different retail patterns. And it's not to mean that you're seeing it getting less in terms of retail sales tax dollars. Those retail sales tax dollars are just being attributed to different places. They're now going to the residents. It's now to, you'll see it on your retail sales tax dollars as Home Depot delivery or Amazon delivery or any of these places that delivers specifically to the residents as opposed to the physical brick and mortar store. Now, brick and mortar stores are still doing very well. It's just that our need for that amount of space per capita has changed. And so cities along Wasatch front have said, oh, maybe these centers that we've been holding out, we've been saying this is going to be our commercial generator. They used to generate all these sales for us. Maybe we need to reconsider that. Maybe that's not coming back. Maybe that's now a class B location. And we need to consider a different highest and best use and some rezoning, or maybe we need to look at some financial incentives. Some economic development tools to revitalize that area, to consider a different use there. Why is that now turning to a different use, things like that? So that's what's happening a little bit in retail sectors, a few slides here to show that in graph form. Both of those are just the ride, the percentage of online sales. You can see that unique spike there in twenty twenty. And we were clipping along at a pretty good pace in purple there of increasing, but it originated at a pace where retail should handle it. And then twenty twenty came along and something happened in twenty twenty. Anyone remembers that fun year? And everything spiked. Now you see we've leveled off a little bit after that as people have gotten back out. But still, the impact of that and people becoming more accustomed to online shopping and online shopping just improving and delivery channels and things like that improving, we've now changed greatly significantly the amount that is online. Go to the next slide. This has been a major change. In about the year twenty twelve, most projections were that we'd get to maybe by twenty thirty-five percent of grocery sales would be online. You know, either, either just come in to pick it up or deliver it to your home. And we're already close to here in twenty twenty, ten percent of that. And why this is important is now grocery stores are changing and saying, maybe we don't need ninety thousand square feet anymore. Maybe now we need sixty thousand square feet. And instead, somewhere else in the city, we need the thirty thousand, the fifty thousand square foot warehouse to where we can just store this, we don't have to have the nicer build out. We don't have to have the same, you know, layout, design and number of people there. We can really automate this a lot better to where we can send deliveries directly in people's homes. Or grocery stores are also saying, well, we need more space in the back of the store to where we can fill up these orders, these online orders. I mean, you've probably dealt with, you go to a grocery store and the aisles too crowded and it's half of it's because someone's trying to fill online orders, right? And so grocery stores are reconsidering how much space they need. And this is a big thing for cities because cities look at this and say, well, you know, Smiths or whoever it is is our largest, you know, sales tax producer. If we lose some of their space to that, ultimately, are we losing some of our retail sales? That's not the case. People are still buying food. Should that be attributed to different areas? And then come to a warehouse, might come to a smaller footprint and those sales tax hours instead of coming specifically that transaction happening in that store, maybe it's happening at the home, like that's the place to deliver. Let's go to the next slide. So here is, you're probably familiar with Heber, everyone's been to Heber before. Just use this as an example of what has changed just in that retail component. This is in nineteen ninety-seven, it's apparently before we had color, during the black and white. And the retail sales were happening in Heber really along the Main Street. And this is where they were pulling all their sales tax dollars from. If you jump forward to the next slide, just twenty fifteen, it was largely still in that area. They added a little supercenter area, so you were expanding out a little bit more. You go to the next slide, in twenty twenty-two, it's still happening in the downtown and it's still happening in that supercenter, but to a much less degree because now all of these residential areas, you can put a circle around all the neighborhoods. But now these are becoming little micro areas of sales tax generation. These new subdivisions where people are spending on average now, the statistics from last year were four thousand dollars per capita online. So think about your own family, how many do you have in your household? Did you spend four thousand times the number of people in your household to Amazon delivery places? That's the story in Utah. I have seven children and we better not spend. But, but you can start to see that picture, right? And so this is what's happening with these, these cities now that are saying, all right, our retail sales tax dollars were here, we're still getting the same amount or more retail sales tax dollars because they're being spread out. Do we want to continue to try and attract people to our downtown and create that sense of community to get them to spend dollars there? Or how is it that we do that, that we now reemphasize the downtown, recognizing that people in perpetuity are going to continue to spend money in their homes? And they'll still spend money in brick and mortar stores, but that, as you saw from those graphs, that shifts, has changed. So we go to the next slide. Cities are taking into consideration now this, much more the fiscal impact of these different developments of what's happening. So a Burger King right now in Utah, and this is some Burger Kings do really well, some don't do as well, some probably have, I don't know, better Whoppers or whatever they do. But on most of them, on average, are generating only about thirty-five hundred dollars a year to the city in the sales tax. So you're still getting property tax from them and you're getting, you know, these are jobs. But in terms of sales taxes, it's thirty-five hundred dollars to the city per year. Or then if you look at an apartment building now, and this is not to say, this is not an advocate to be heard for density or ad apartments, etc. This is just to show you the difference when a developer or somebody now looks at a site and says, could I put in retail here or could I put in the apartments? And the apartments here, they're, the argument, well, for a developer is returns, the difference in the city here, what are the fiscal impacts of this? Well, an apartment like that on the same size lot of Burger King could generate about seventy-eight hundred dollars per year compared to the thirty-five hundred because you're getting the sales tax now from the online sales. And then you get the sales tax from the population distribution. And this is the other, the other one half of the one percent the city doesn't get directly. It gets reimbursed to you from the state based on your population metrics. So this is a consideration that a lot of cities are looking at saying, are we, are we using the right uses? Are our key locations, are they generating the fiscal impacts that we need to support our city? Are we recognizing now the residential has changed in terms of being a little bit of a field tax generating? So you go to the next slide. Cities are getting more and more into this, you know, how is it that we adapt to changing sales patterns? Do we embrace it with more hybrid density residential? Do we look at more place making, more places to try to bring people to the downtown or to our key areas? Do we try to focus more on splash pad and theft holes and architectural design, places where people actually want to be and walk and congregate? And planners love to hear this because they feel like, yes, finally, now, now people are listening that we, we want to create places where people want to go to spend their money because it's, it's an experience. It creates, you know, feeling, the memories and things like that. I go to the next slide. Office, just real quick. And again, the idea of just giving us a little bit market overview is to talk about what these changes are doing in terms of needing economic development tools. And so from an office perspective, as you can see on the left-hand column there, in those different years, this is what leases were signed at per office space. Typically, like a suburban or a downtown office space, you would, you would lease it about two hundred and fifty square feet per employee. That's what each employee would essentially attribute to them was two hundred and fifty square feet. And the parking on that, you needed four spaces per thousand rentable square feet. That was the metric. But by two thousand, that had come down a little bit, two thousand and ten, you can see that come down quite a bit to two hundred square feet. We were cramming more people in. You have more of a tech influence where you're putting people closer together, tech people felt like that was more collaborative. And that created a need for five spaces per thousand because you had more people in the same building, you needed more parking. So this is where, then at the time, developers came and said, I can't build a building now for spaces per thousand because I'll be functionally obsolete. I need to have five spaces per thousand or six spaces. So that if a tech company wants to lease my building, I have that ability to satisfy their heart and needs. You see by twenty nineteen, we got down to a hundred and eighty square feet. And this is really, you know, cramming people in together. And then we all got sick. And now in twenty twenty-two, so far, there's just still this great unknown, is leases now have jumped back up. People are taking a little bit more space in terms of per employee, but overall businesses are taking less space because they're trying to do things like hoteling and more remote work. And so this, this question still exists here, what will be the parking that is ultimately needed? Will we get back to like nineteen ninety levels? Is that going to reverse and will, will drop down to a hundred and eighty? Before I was, was working here, I was working in the San Francisco Bay Area and Google was signing leases at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty square feet per employee. And so then you really started needing, you know, six, seven parking spaces per person. And that, that wouldn't happen there. I mean, you can see that influence happening a little bit and happened for a while there in Lehigh and some of their tech corridor areas or tech businesses. So just something to keep a mind, or your, your mind on here is offices, jobs, and businesses starting to come back to what might be, you know, when we figure out what the new normal is. Those parking standards that need to change, how is it you help incentivize to, to get the right type of, of parking? We go to the next slide, you can see a difference here in the cost for parking and the need for parking. If you're at four and a half spaces per thousand square feet in a hundred thousand square foot building, you can have four hundred and forty-five employees and say, that's going to take three and a half acres of parking. If it's five and a half spaces, you need almost a whole another acre for parking. And then if you see on there on the, on the bottom, just the costs that are associated with that parking. A lot of cities will say, we don't want these seas of asphalt and concrete parking. We want, we want buildings and design and green space. And the retort to that is, well, below grade space costs me thirty thousand dollars a space. If I do an above grade garage covered, it's twenty-one thousand dollars a space. That's anywhere between twenty-one and twenty-five thousand now as compared to surface spaces. And so this is, these are the metrics that developers are dealing with. And cities are trying to fight back and say, well, we really want the above grade space because we don't want to take five acres. So five thousand takes two acres. And because we want other uses in that area, we want, we want to see other fiscal impacts generated there, other uses for our community. And that's where you're seeing the need for more incentives to offset some of those, those costs to get really the, the needs that the community or city wants. All right, so let's bring us into the conversation about tax income financing. Are you all pretty familiar with CRAs, RDAs, tax income financing, some of you? So the idea of this, this tool, you, you've heard the acronyms, RDA, CDA, EDA, CEACRA. Those are all acronyms for redevelopment, a redevelopment area or redevelopment agency. The legislature changes the acronyms every couple of years, just for fun. And so ultimately, what it is though, is the idea is to take dollars that are being generated in an area because of new development and redeploy them back into that area. So instead of right now, your property taxes going and they go out and they go countywide for the county, and they go citywide, they go school district wide. This is taking the dollars that are generated in a specific area and putting a portion of those back in the area to build up that area. So the idea here on the left is, this is a, an office building that would look great in any community and is a, is a decent design. But maybe what the city wants is something on the right that has a little more planning. It's got better landscaping, it has bike paths, it has maybe some underground parking, better design elements. And to go from the left to the right, a developer would say, it's just not feasible in the current market. This is, this is viable on the left, it's not viable on the right. How do we get from the left to the right if that's what a city ultimately wants? If you go to the next slide. Same thing, same thing here is that maybe a city says, well, we, you know, envision a retail center here. This may be what is financially viable for the developers is a typical retail strip center. You know, minimal design elements, really no landscaping or, you know, community type gathering spaces. Whereas maybe a city envisions the fiscal impacts or the community benefit or something there on the right. I love that picture on the left that it's obviously been shortened, that truck on the end is like a little sponge truck or something. But this on the right there is maybe there's, you know, there's a mixed use element that could be involved there. Maybe there's some public plaza, open space, some different design elements that could be incorporated. If there was an ability to bridge that financing gap that exists between these two sides. Go to the next slide. It also pertains to residential areas. We get a lot of, in Utah, what you see there on the top left corner, you know, great neighborhoods. But they ultimately don't have a lot of the amenities that people are looking for. And you have some of, you know, minimal design characteristics and standards. If you look at the, on the top right, that is a subdivision that ultimately is might work in some areas in terms of wanting more open space, but maybe misses what the, what the city wants in terms of variety of housing type or landscape amenities or parks. And again, this is not a, I mean, every city is different in terms of what works best. Some, some cities, it's thirty acre lots and other cities, it's townhomes. And this is not to say there's a one size fits all whatsoever. On the bottom, there are two communities in Utah that have had more master planning, more tax incentive dollars put back into that area to be able to provide for things like better street planning and parks, landscaping, different designs. That's a little bit of what the idea of these economic development tools, this could we go from one to the other if that's something the community or one desires. Next slide, you know, same thing here. This is, these are both Utah retail areas on top of just the standard strip center and the bottom is in Holiday. An area that was a redevelopment area, it's called an RDA. And they were able to use dollars that that project created. How that changed, the taxable value is what existed and then what they created. Those, that change in taxable dollars was put back into this project. So from a graph perspective here, this is how the CRA works. Now, a CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, that's the latest acronym. Is that this is set up by a city, by virtue of being a city council, you are the, ultimately, you are the Community Reinvestment Agency. You can choose a specific area of your city and say, this is the area we want to focus on because we want, we think it's the great area for economic development. We'd like to see this be an area that grows and maybe have some parks and, you know, some different community features that we need. You could, you can pick that area and ultimately, without, this is not need voter approval. You certainly go to the public and there's a public hearing. People who live in that area will not be influenced by it, it doesn't increase their taxes, they're changing fees for them. Ultimately, what it is, is just taking the tax dollars that they're spending already and again, putting it back in the area. The way that that works, CRA, if you look at it along the blue, you take your area, let's say it's a hundred acres. You take the current taxes that are being generated there. And you essentially freeze those for the next twenty years. So whatever the school district is getting right now, you're going to continue to get for the next twenty years. That does not change. Any new growth, which is your red and now lighter gray, that is split between the tax amenities. That's where there's room to new, the county, school district, any of your other tax amenities, water, sewer, where you say, all right, we have a vision for this area. We think that if we leave this area alone, it stays what it is. So that's the blue. We're just going to continue to receive those same taxes, but we feel like there's potential for this area if you put something back into this area. It's called passing the but-for argument, which is but for these incentives, this would never happen. So we want to build a park and a community center, but for us getting some incentives or incentivizing a development this way, this would not happen. So you have to kind of prove that case. So as you can see here, any new growth that's happening above that blue line, so we're in between the yellow dotted lines there, is split between the tax entities and the agency. The agency again is you. That is dependent on whatever agreement you have with the, the tax entities. Usually it's like a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Let's say a new, a million dollars. Let's say a new, a million dollars new a year is generated, seven hundred fifty thousand goes to you as the agency, two hundred fifty thousand goes to the taxing entities. So they're not only getting what they have frozen, what they're getting existing, they're also getting twenty-five percent of the new growth. And then after the, the twenty-year period, it can be twenty-five years and fifteen years, whatever you determine of the taxing entities. After that period ends, then the project area goes away and all of the taxes continue just to flow back to the county, to the city, to the school district, unencumbered, no, you know, no splitting or sharing that. And what has to happen in these tax increment financing areas is the dollars that are raised in the area have to be spent within that area. So you, you could do projects that help that if they come into the area, but you can't take a project over by the freeway and say, let's generate those taxes and let's use them over here on some subdivision or neighborhood. You have a lot of leeway as a city as to how those dollars are used. Ultimately, you create a project area plan and create some sort of goals for that area. And so we'd like this to see, we'd like this to be an area of job creation. Or maybe it's retail sales growth, or we'd like to see this as an area of community investment. And you can do things like putting infrastructure, opening parks. You could reimburse for better increased design for parking components. The legislation did change this year. You cannot use it for incentivizing retailers. You cannot go out and tell Costco, here's a couple, actually a hundred thousand dollars. You know, to come to our, our place. But you could go and create a beautiful community plaza is a place that maybe a retailer would want to be. This is a, this is a better, this is a better option than what they're getting in Ogden or Mary's Slater Hill or wherever. That's something you could certainly do with those dollars if your attempt is to attract retailers. Any questions on that? I'm talking on here. Alright, so let's go to the next slide. So a couple of things, this is a lot of, this is a lot of text here. What is, why are we doing community reinvestment areas in Utah? And this is, and just for reference, like this is how the Apple Center in downtown Salt Lake was built. It was taking all the new sale tax, not sale tax, the property tax dollars. They were coming from that area and putting in the Apple Center. This is how a lot of your business depots all of them along the Wasatch front. This is how, Ben was in like downtown Bountiful, for example, there's, you know, a couple million dollars that were put back into that area to help for landscaping and streets, designing, things like that. What's driving growth and development right now in Utah? It's regularly the top economy. You have this development friendly legislature and you have pretty limited political gridlock. Whether you agree with the legislative leanings, there, there's not gridlock because it's, it is pretty single party there. Changing trend and immigration results in more people than natural birth. We're seeing strong growth from west coast states. You see where the fastest growing state in the nation the past ten years. And we have this pretty diversified economy and significant recreational methods. Those are all things that are driving growth and development. Some of the things that are starting to hinder growth and development or cause some concerns are cities are often reticent to bond. Now, I say that because they think they're concerned about should we do those improvements now? How is it that we get this infrastructure that we now? We are the most, from a bonding and fiscal status, we are the most conservative state in the nation, which is fantastic in terms of Utah has a triple A credit rating. The rating agencies constantly tell Utah, hey, if there was a quadruple A, you would get that. Which is fantastic, which allows the state to borrow very cheap rates. While what the offset of that is, is that some cities are very concerned on moving forward with infrastructure projects. And that sometimes can create, you know, traffic, gridlock, lack of the necessary homes, aging infrastructure. So the consideration, probably put that one on both sides of the table. There is an anti-growth movement that's gaining a lot of traction due to traffic and air quality issues. People want to move here, buy their home and then not letting anyone else move here. And that's very, uh, limited labor force, high construction costs, where the two percent unemployment rate, which is the lowest in the nation, and there's just not, there's no available workers. Density is, is really misunderstood just from a fiscal impact perspective. And people think apartments and maybe you'll think of crime and cinder blocks and what is this going to look like? And, you know, that, that needs to be better understood. And then economic development tools, the degree have become a little less effective. So those CRA have been around for a very long time. Now, a lot of school districts and counties will push back and say, well, this, this growth is coming regardless. Why is it that we should incentivize it? If it's going to come, why should we incentivize it? Well, we're not trying to incentivize new growth to come. We're trying to incentivize better growth. We're trying to incentivize better quality of life characteristics. We're trying to incentivize better just overall communities. And so instead of saying, great, go ahead and build your forty unit apartment building, let's say, great, can we, can you build your forty unit apartment building, but also let's put in a public component there. Let's put in some sort of better design. Let's put in, you know, maybe some covered parking allows this to be a, a better asset to the community and to, you know, residents. And so really, economic development tools should become for better quality of life characteristics. School districts, counties have stepped a little bit away from that. And so that has led to some concern about where we get the right type of development. To go to the next slide. Again, what we have in many areas of Utah, we have these like limited planning, limited amenities, limited design use type. And what we, we need to combat some of these affordability issues and enhance quality of life is some better planning, some enhanced amenities, maybe better design, greater variety. Again, this is not saying that density solves that. This is just a, these, these pictures happen to be cited more than some of those. But that's the idea on some of these economic development tools. And this is why the, the legislature created what's called the public infrastructure districts. To go to the next slide. This is a new tool that was put in place in twenty nineteen. It's used throughout the West. Really any development that's done in Colorado is done through what's called the metropolitan district or metro district. A form of this is used in some other states. You hear about Melrose districts in California, and this is different. This, Utah has made sure to take what's been learned in other states and create a better tool. But this is really a financing tool with defined, specific boundaries. And it's qualified to issue bonds to find public infrastructure improvements. So the way that this works is very different than a CRA or a community reinvestment area. And that, this is, a public infrastructure district has to be approved by a hundred percent of the property owners. So as you can imagine, you're not going and putting a public infrastructure district over half your city or even in, you know, an existing community because you'll never get a hundred percent property owner approval. This is for new development. This could be as small as an acre, it could be as large as, you know, thousands of acres. To where you're putting in, the developer will come and say, alright, I own this property. I'd like to put a public infrastructure district. You as a city or county, whoever's the jurisdictional entity there, works with that developer to say, what are the parameters of this district? Once that district is formed, it's formed by the city, it is completely standalone, separate entity. It has no, there's no recourse to the city. There's no requirement from the city. There's no cost associated to the city. This is a separate standalone district. That's different than a special assessment area. It was still a component, a part of the city. This is a district that is owned and operated by ultimately the eventual property owners there. That district, once it is formed, has the capacity to do a couple of things. It can exercise a, a middle, a tax again, that is set by you as a city. You as a city set the cap on that to make sure that there's not an excessive amount of tax on a certain area of your city. That tax can be, then be used to pay bonds that will pay for infrastructure. So this can pay for anything that ultimately will be publicly owned, turned back to the city. Roads, sewer, water tanks, sewer lift stations, parks, trails, mass transit type improvements. They are separate against standalone financing entities and they are created for nearly all types of development. Give you a couple of examples of where these, where they exist in Utah to this point and and it may be a tool that you ultimately reuse in North Ogden, maybe a tool that just doesn't, doesn't make sense for. If you go to the next slide. So the idea on these is to first identify, are there potential revenue sources that could be used to pay for infrastructure? And so the first thing is identifying those revenue sources. Some of those revenue sources are, one, a middle levy, which is what we just did in the, in the tax room in, in Utah. The second is tax increment financing. So that is what's created in the CRA. That's that difference as we show on that, as I show on that graph between all that new growth that happens. That's called tax increments. The, the new growth is increments. And so let's say you create one of these areas and it's generating five hundred thousand dollars a year in new tax growth. You can either save that up and maybe year ten, that gives you enough money to put in a park that you want. Or you as a city could say, alright, we as an agency, we're going to bond and we're going to go out, we want to do a six million dollar park right now. We're going to pay that bond of all these future taxes that are going to be coming in. That's what the bond will be underwritten based on those new taxes that are coming in. Or if you don't want that liability to you as a city and you don't want to have to deal with pledging your sales tax or having any sort of recourse to the city, then it's creating a public infrastructure district that that district then takes upon itself the responsibility of paying those bonds and that tax increment financing, you're using that to pledge to that district. There's no recourse to property owners. This is the risk that bond holders take to say, alright, will that development be constructed as anticipated and will people pay their taxes on that? If you add a new mill levy, that is an additional tax, an additional property tax on the people who live in that specific area. If it's tax increment financing, that's just taking their taxes that they're already spending, again, focusing them back on that area. Impact fees is another way you can use as a revenue source. If the developer is ready to put in those improvements, it's taking, instead of reimbursing the developer, it's reimbursing the district. They can bond for those costs upfront. You can also look at sales tax as a revenue source or TRT, you know, as your, your tourism recreation tax. It comes off of your hotel and things like that. Ultimately, those revenue sources are used to put into what's called a PIB bond. These are typically thirty-year bonds. And they are used for things like parks and recreation, streets improvements, water infrastructure, wastewater, public transportation. One example of this right now is again, Heber, I don't know, you should do something different than Heber. But Heber has a significant new residential development coming in, about fifty-five hundred homes. The first phase is about twelve hundred homes. And the developer there wanted to do a public infrastructure district because they felt like the infrastructure costs were absorbing. It's on the hillside and you've got migrating and water pump, station needs and sewer needs. And so they asked the city for a public infrastructure district. So ultimately, what would be created there was a tax that the end homeowner would end up paying to live in that property. That's better savings for the developer, that cheaper cost of money that, that PIB bond would allow them to then create greater amenities throughout the project. So then if you're a homeowner that are living there, you're paying more in your taxes, but you're getting better parks and, and some better improvements. Well, the city there said, great, we'll give you a pit, but we want a regional park. We have it in our ten-year capital facilities plan. In ten years, or ten years down the road, we have, we have this idea for a park. But we can't get there for ten more years based off of the park impact that he's having coming in. We like that park now. We want your pit to pay for the park. So they're getting this large park. And what the city is saying to the existing residents is, great, you wanted a park. You didn't want higher taxes. We are making the people who live, who move in, that growth pay for growth. All the people that you don't like that are coming in from California or other states. Let's have them pay. They'll live close to the park. They'll pay for it by virtue of their taxes. Everybody else in the city, you're going to be able to enjoy a park. It's a public park. We as a city will maintain. We have the ability to maintain that. But ultimately, the developer is going to put this in. Here are the standards that we require for this to be put in. They want this to be above and beyond our existing city standards in order to approve this pit. And that's how that's working in, in Heber. A bond there that will get down some of that infrastructure that we need. Go to the next slide. Or down to four more, we're close. A creation of a public infrastructure, if you've heard of these, yeah, PIDs, they're called PIDs, public infrastructure district. So you'll, you'll see one, and they're happening in the county of Snow Basin, makes a lot of sense, Nordic Valley. I think you'll see a couple out in the western part of the county. We have areas, we have real expensive infrastructure needs because you bring infrastructure in from a long ways away or you need more pump stations and water tanks. You'll see some of this occur. But the creation of a public infrastructure district, we don't have to spend much time on this slide, but really is how this is submitted to the city. It's essentially like a a letter of intent and it turns into a governing document where you go back and forth with your city members, Scott S would be, and your planners would be very involved in working with the developers to make sure that it's fitting one of the, the needs of the city. And then there's a formation of a PIB and at that time, when this PIB is formed, it's a separate standalone district and they have the ability there to then issue bonds. Again, it's not based on the credit rating of the city. This is now a new, newly formed district that doesn't have a credit rating. So where you as a city have a credit rating and you're able to, to issue bonds at lower rates, that district would rate, would issue bond at a higher rate until in a couple of years when they're able to go refund those bonds because they now have a credit rating in the history of being district. Let me go to the next slide. That's just a timeline. Typical, how long it takes in, in other cities and places where you're submitting a letter of intent and some governing documents. And then when the district is formed, all of the process there, let's go on one more. This is where we're seeing PIDs happening right now in Utah. Where there's typically developable land, there's strong growth patterns, it's very popular in second home markets. Where you have recent transportation or transit investments or near-term plans for those. Where there's a need for infrastructure, where you have master planning capacity, and then cities are seeing a need for a diversity of, of housing stock. So you can see essentially all through the state, quite a few pits in the southern Utah. All the way as far north, which right now being considered for a couple in, in our city. Up in Rich County and throughout the Wasatch, quite a few along the Wasatch back. The inland ports was, its major infrastructure is being done through a public infrastructure district bond. Sticking the tax increment that is there and pledging that to the bond, which that's allowing them to do it. Trans loading facility and five G improvements and things like that. Next slide. And in here is just a sampling of cities with approved PIDs or currently considering. So you can see there's quite a variety up and down, up and down too. So that is a forty-eight, that was a minute, that was a minute, forty-six minute overview there on tax increment financing, public infrastructure districts. Really, these are tools that are intended to, if we look at it again, back at those first couple of of slides of where the growth is happening, what's happening in the retail and office markets is that you are, you're experiencing these, this massive growth in Utah, right? And we are trying to figure out how best makes sense of that growth, recognizing that most people want to have their communities just like they were. But knowing they also want their kids to live there, grandkids to live there and some things you have to, you have to be able to smartly use tools in order to get the type of development that we want. Not just the type of development that is, that you're currently feasible in the market. Now, some cities will say, hey, let the market be the market. Why should we give any type of incentives? Now imagine if the Federal Reserve were to act like that. If we were to say, just let the market run, just let it do what it wants to do. Then we, we would have, at times we'd have absolute chaos. We have what we had back in the, like, the mid nineteen hundreds or not the mid nineteen hundreds, like the nineteen fifteen through nineteen nineteen, when we had this period of just absolute chaos where we didn't have the ability to control interest rates, we didn't have the ability to control money supply. Now, a lot of times we think the Fed does it really, really poorly. But at least there is a, a sense there of, we know what happens if we tighten the money supply or if we loosen the money supply. We can see ultimately effects of that, whether that takes a year, a couple of years is dependent upon the, the gravity of the situation. But these are tools that are being used by other cities. So we say let the market be the market. The market is being, these are being implemented in other cities. This is what developers are now saying, right? If I can get tax increment dollars in this city, why, that, that becomes a better site for me. That becomes something where I can reuse my own tax dollars. I can create a better product. I have a better chance of enticing a retailer there than I do a city across the way who will not provide some of those dollars. So that's one thing you're seeing from cities that ultimately it's a way that people are, cities are using these tools to account for this growth and, and look for better quality of life characteristics. Any questions? How many questions for Ben?
Yeah, I'm curious in the, the example that you gave in Heber with the developer that's fifty-five hundred homes, based on twelve hundred regional park. It's, it feels, it's just a gut feel that the developer Is using a tactic where they're the single owner of a large plot of land. So it's easy for them to get one hundred percent approval for a P I D. Sorry, right? Because I'm just approving it for myself because it benefits me down the road. And effectively creating a situation where every homeowner that moves into that area now pays an extra tax. How are the cities, the cities. Ensuring that the residents are aware of that tax as they move in. I mean, we've had examples just here in our little city with one particular development. Where, you know, residents, uh, it's not a tax, but there are other circumstances. That residents move in and they're surprised. So by the way, because they weren't, they, they weren't made aware.
Yeah.
How is that ensured so that there isn't this surprise? I just got my tax bill and what is this?
Yeah.
This, this uh, infrastructure district.
Good question. It was a big concern in the legislature to make sure that noticing was done. Uh, very, very specific on the noticing, but as you know, I mean, anyone knows, go and like. Sign your home papers and just like forty signatures, right?
Right.
Pretty easy to, to skip over something. And so it is, uh, it is a concern. It's something we suggest for cities when they are working on the governing documents for these districts. To make sure there are very specific requirements in there. You could say, hey, every three months, the district needs to send out a mailer. That simply says on, you know, red piece of paper or glitter or whatever, so it's very noticeable that. You are in a public infrastructure district. Your taxes are this. Taxes of other areas in the city are this. The difference between your taxes is because your taxes are going paid towards this, this infrastructure. That has to be, uh, anytime a home is marketed, anytime a home is sold, it's required by the city, Utah will be noticed that way. And if I was a city, I'd actually ensure that by putting in the governing documents that it's. And whatever is double the state requires, just so that you're not getting those surprises homeowners. Um.
So even, even though the city doesn't have any control over this.
In the governing documents when you set.
In the, but that's the one place that they do, is in those governing documents as they're set up.
Yep. You'll set there the debt capacity. You'll say, all right. Developer, you said you need thirty million dollars. This district cannot issue any more than thirty million dollars. You kind of have a tax rate higher than, you know, four mils or point zero zero four. That's, that, that's that. And here's the list of everything you can send money on. And here's your noticing. And we wanna work with you as to how that board transitions. This is a five person board and initially this is the developer and whoever owns, you know, property. We wanna make sure by year five, this is properly transitioned. We'd like a number of, you know. I don't know, uh, you could, you could put a city council member on it, but you, you don't have. Any sort of requirements of the city to be part of that district. But there's a lot that you can put into every documents to make sure that. You're not just getting a, a district completed autonomy for thirty years and it's your, you're setting the balance of that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Ben, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Be safe on your way home. Very informative. You know, John did remind me, we've had some discussion about. Trying to free up the planning permission to do more planning versus things staff could do in Maryland. Uh, we need to make sure we're figuring down that road. Cause I think this creates some real interesting things. That's probably where they need to be spending their time, so. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda at this point in time. Council, I would call to any who see or identify conflicts or interference based upon our agenda this evening. Are there any? I don't see any. John, I don't know if we have anyone online, but if you would monitor that, make sure that they have an opportunity to discuss tonight. So council, I would be looking for a motion to approve the June fourteenth. Twenty twenty two city council meeting minutes. We have a motion.
Yeah, right. Motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for June fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, council member Dow pass. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, council member. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing that all in favor of approving the June fourteenth, twenty twenty two city council meetings, please say hi.
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 Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We also are looking this evening to consider approving the. Minutes of the city council meeting that was held on July fifth of twenty twenty two. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
So moved by council member Swanson. Do you have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, council member Severin. Is there any correction or discussion on those minutes? Seeing now all in favor of approving the minutes, please say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. So thanks to you, no, no exceptions. We'll all move into item number five on our active agenda this evening, which is public comments. Um, as you like my comments and approach the podium, please state your name. And if you're a resident of North Argon. Don't wanna be rude, but we'll hold the public comments to five minutes. So John, if you would see if anyone online has been in the public comments, let us know. So at this time, we'll open the meeting for public comments. No one online? No one here who would like to make the comment this evening?
Why? I wanted to wait for Ryan Barker. Is he gonna be in?
He may be here, but uh, we may not have further public comments. So if you'd like to make a comment, now would be the time.
My name is Jonathan Keys. I'm a resident of North Argon. I live at three, six, seven, eight, north. Six hundred east, North Argon, Utah. I've got a few handouts for, for the council members if I can hand out. So on page, on page two, you'll see that uh. We have a, a shed that, that has been discussed once before here. And so we're, we're just coming to be able to re, revisit this, this particular shed. And you'll see on page two. Um, our assumption honestly, when we looked at this, is that the property line was right up to the asphalt. So we, we had assumed that the property line went right to the asphalt and you can see that we grasped all the way up to the asphalt. And so, um, when we did the shed, we were, we were uneducated as to how far back we needed to be. And that there was actually a coat of, of, of three feet. And so we, we misunderstood that. But it came to our attention through the, through the city that we needed to, uh, that we, that it appeared that we were encroaching. And so we actually had some city people come out. They took a look at it. They said that, um. We needed to pay for a permit, so went and paid for that permit and thought everything would be just fine. Only to find out six months later that we got a citation in the mail from North Argon City Police Officers. So we immediately paid that as well, a twenty five dollar fine. And, and so we just want to, to talk just a little bit about it. So on page three. Um, this was the original plot that we looked at when we were meeting with our builder. And so this particular plot, you, you, you don't really see the easement in this plot at this stage. And so we thought we had the entire parcel. Um, and then you'll see on page four, uh, that it was approved later on. This is, this was down the track. I think it was. In twenty fifteen, August of twenty fifteen. And, and so then we, we showed up right before we broke ground. There was this, this parcel put in, this, this, this paved road. And so anyways, looking at the table here, there's, there's just a few discrepancies. Um. So one, you'll see that there's two C thirty ones. And so if you, and then you look on the, on the parcel in the green box, there, there's a C thirty one there. Uh, and then on the table, there's two C thirty ones. So it, it is assumed that the bottom C thirty one is, but there's a discrepancy there. And then if you'll turn to page five, this is actually the location of the pin, which is at thirty feet. Um, and so kind of on page four, it showed the map. If, if we assume that the bottom thirty one is. Uh, correct, then twenty, twenty point one feet plus, plus the, the, the ninety two. Uh, here's a title there, but with the eight, eight point nine two equals about uh, twenty, twenty nine feet. And but the pin is at thirty feet. So there's about a foot discrepancy. And last time this was proposed, um, if you look at page six. Um, the pin into the, the actual property line, there's about a foot discrepancy. And that can make a pretty significant difference in, in, in where the shed is located. Um, and then page seven. Um, we've kind of mapped it out as best we can. No, we have not the, a full survey. But near as we can see, we're not encroaching. The four to six feet that was previously mentioned in another meeting. It, it's looking more closer to six to eight inches, which is, which is significantly different than encroaching. Um, and you can see on page eight, another view of that. And then on page nine, and I see, um, that we're not the only residents that have encroached on different. Properties for North Argon. And so we're, we're asking North Argon to, to take a look at this very seriously. I've got a neighbor just north of me. He's got a fence on his, on his property that he put in. And he actually accidentally encroached on my property about six inches. And I went and talked to him about it. And he said, you know what? I don't know what happened here, but the, the fence people accidentally put a jog in the fence. He said it was unintentional. And I said, you know what? No problem. It's not impeding me. Um, and last time, when Ryan Barker was here, he said that he had public works go up and look at this, this, this parcel. And that, that there is access, that they, you can get equipment in and out. And so we're asking North Argon to be as, be as neighborly to us as we have been to our neighbors to the north. And there's just, there's a few other discrepancies on ten and eleven. You know, since this was brought up last September, we've asked the city to come. I was actually maintained in the weeds up until last September when I was told. That we needed to move our shed. And so you can see on the right hand side, weeds have overgrown. There's a bunch of concrete that's been left ever since we moved in. Um, and this particular area of sidewalk, there's a Down syndrome man that walks every day to work. And he has to go out in the street to go around this, this concrete citizen trip. And so we're asking the city to, 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 to enforce their own codes as well. Um, and then there's, there's some stormwater and drainage that is not, um, not been removed, that fell underneath the original construction. And last but not least, um, if the city does continue to tell us that we need to. That we are encroaching, that we need to move our, our, our piece of property. Um, we would propose that all non-government, um, erected structures be removed from the, the parcel plan.
Did that pretty close to five minutes, John? So thank you for the information, the presentation. Um, I had heard you wanted the situation readdressed. To do that. Um, which council member would have authorization to put that back on the agenda if they so desire? Do we have the minutes from that meeting? Or does a council member, you remember?
Last week of April.
And I had talked to Ryan and to Blake. And JD actually came out as well.
I've been up there and seen it.
Yes, you came up too, sir.
So anyway, we'll, uh, research that. If you wanna request a council member to put it on the agenda for reconsideration. You're welcome to, I give the appropriate council member to do so, John. Thank you. Any other public comments? King deal, huh?
We do everything in the king. So, um, just to clarify, just.
Say your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, my name is Denise Keys. I am a resident of North Argon City and I live at three, six, seven, eight, north, six hundred east in North Argon. Um, I just want to, on page, if we can go back to page ten. When the city visited us. Um, this was back in August of last year. It was the last week of August. That's when I requested for the sidewalk. The felt in the storm drain and the weeds, um, to be cut. As of last August, come twenty twenty one, we have not seen any effort on any of that, any progress. Um, previous to the, the August. Um, we, for the last three years, have cut the weeds down. Before we were, um. Made attention that our shed was encroaching, we on our own goodwill have been cutting the weeds down for three years. Um, just because it's ugly and it's a fire hazard. And so. My children also take care of the diers load in the back. Um, I pay them ten dollars a bag and they'll go collect it because they hate that weed. I think it's awful. And my landscaper, um, gets on me if I don't get it done. That's okay. Um, so anyway, we just, we just really want to cooperate with the city and. And we would still like to be able to take care of the weeds and not use any extra tax doll, tax dollars. Um, to have other people come where they can be used to other places that we did, if we did, please have this considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment this evening? All right, anyone online?
Nope.
Thank you for joining us tonight, you know, giving us the information and, uh, once again, if you'd like it, if you reconsidered. Yeah, with probably John or Susan, they can tell you which council member can help you get that on the agenda for consideration if you might. Mr. Southwood, would you like to comment, uh, this evening?
Yeah, not so much on that, but I could. So it's Rod Shapwick, um, North Argon resident for forty seven years, loved our community. And the way we're, the direction that the council is moving with. Just something I, for Scott Hess, and, and I've tried to get ahold of him and he hasn't returned my call. But regarding the, the plans for, for street trees, we are a, a, a street tree. City, what is it? We were, yeah, Arbor City for the, you know, for the United States, where I remember that. I've heard on several committees, but, um. When you okay plans to put in trees, let's take that property at the Arby's, I guess. And, and, and across the street to the Walgreens and say that they must put in for. Uh, the. Trees that are, that are on this, that docket, that, that you can plant and put in. And then they die. Uh, and down another one is, and they don't get replaced. And that could have been trees for our, our parades from down Washington. So I'm wondering why. It, the city is not enforcing what was put together. Uh, as that development with the street trees is put in. So I just, we're, we're letting the trees in front of Arby's or the Smith's property, there's four or five crab apples. And they're not watering them. They're watering the flowers. We have to cut the flowers down to half and. And water the, our street trees that create a beautiful community. And so I'm, I, I'm just bringing that, uh, to, to, uh, question. Can we enforce that if the trees die?
I'm no. Look at the ordinance, Rod, and see what it requires. Yeah, so that's Scott, if you would get with. Okay, so we are a tree city USA and we should. Our membership. So if I need in our, our water ordinance, we did allow for watering the shrubs and trees because we didn't want those to. To go there. So, uh, Scott, maybe you could get with Rod and take a look at the ordinance. Anyone else? Uh, Dennis said, receive information from Mr. Call. He indicated, reminded me that there was not a motion. There was a lack of a second and the motion died. So you can approach any council member, if you'd like, if you wanna have that readdressed. Um, so.
Um so uh what you need to do is they, they are allowed as a council member to put that on the agenda. So if they so desire, they can do that and and then inform you of, of that evening that will be discussed, okay? All right. Move on to item number six now, which is a discussion or action to consider purchase of city property for request to occupy land owned by North Ogden City. In ten, intention basin parcel located approximately two thirty four east, thirty-nine hundred north. So I see you'll be leading that discussion along with Mr. Call.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh so we have property owner Clint Willis, who has requested from the city whether to uh purchase and or occupy land that there is currently a fence constructed on. So when we look back to the uh record on this, when the property owner had reached out to staff members, this is prior to me getting here, so it looks like maybe uh Rob Scott, Lauren Gardner, and Dave Espinoza about putting the fence just beyond their property and up onto a flat section of North Ogden City-owned land that's just adjacent to uh a water detention basin. So it's, it's not within the fenced area of the basin itself. It's not impeding their access road, but it is uh just kind of an extension. They fenced it essentially as an extension of their property. Um the property owner has submitted a letter requesting this and, and kind of getting their retelling of the events. I wasn't here for that, you know, that portion of it. In speaking to our public works director, um it appears that he had asked the property owner to approach the council. Uh there were some text messages back and forth between public works director and the property owner. Um but again, no confirmation from the legislative body, the council, in saying that they could occupy or otherwise uh improve that land. So similar to other requests, you know, the, the city council has the opportunity to permit the sale of property that you deem unnecessary or, or not even for public interest. Or you can, at the legislative body, allow somebody to occupy that, that property with, you know, any number of of reasons, whether they're maintaining or benefiting the city or doing others. So uh with that, just kind of quick intro, I don't know, John, if you want to pull up the staff report just to give you an idea. On the second page down, has an image of roughly, and this is drawn, I mean aerial image with the county's um property ownerships, but the red area being the Willis, um property owned by Clint Willis, the property owner applicant. And the area in yellow is essentially the encroachment or what has been fenced off. Uh I haven't been in the backyard, you know, it looks like you've got a handful of things back there, playground, some landscaping, grass. Um and swimming pool, there's like a lap pool or, you know, an improvement on the, on the site. Um in addition to that, just for in, well, not infrequently, but when I've been up there, there are at times of pieces of um construction equipment that's parked, right? Here? Yeah, that's about Scott. Okay, so that's kind of utilizing the, uh the access road up. The property owner has, in the, in the request for purchase has indicated that, you know, maybe possible to reroute the access road to the detention basin if they were to pick up some portion of that whole parcel and improve it and uh and then build a new access road from the north into the detention basin, but as it is, it's kind of a, a council decision on what to do with the, the property as it sits. Uh there was a request to the property owner to fill out a land use permit. Uh and then on the heels of that land use permit was a request by the property owner to bring it for the council. But then with summer vacations and some timing, we had a lag. So there's a pending land use, uh land use permit that we essentially denied as it is right now because there's it's fencing that runs off of their private property. Uh but kind of waiting for the council to help us, you know, the next steps are on this one.
John, did you have anything you wanted to add to the discussion before we open this up to the council?
Well, I think it might be good to have the advocate speak as well, but um so the only thing I there, there's some question about what was asked, who responded at the city and how, what those responses were. Um I think no matter what, eventually if this, I'm not thinking this is going to end in a lawsuit because I think the council can, and the landlord or the neighbor can work something out, even if that is a removal and improvements. Um but usually in, in real estate law, if it's not written down, if there's not a written signed contract, then there's no deal. And, and then the only people who could have breached this agreement was the council. So there's, there's plenty of case law in this where it says, hey, if the mayor did it, he, he can't do stuff that only the coun, the council's authorized to do. So that would trickle down to all of the other city employees that we can't authorize people to uh basically occupy city land indefinitely, in this case, for example, so.
John, in, in my review, I don't see anything that authorized it. It was more of, I don't hear from you having to do this. Is that a correct assumption? I, I didn't see anything in the documentation that was provided. I'd indicated there had been a positive response about, on the city in doing this.
Um I, I just, I think from, and it was a conversation that someone relayed to me that they had with uh Mr. Willis that he'd indicated that someone had told him he was okay to. Um I, I don't remember if it was Lauren or Dave Espinoza, who was the person that was said to have, have okayed it, but I, I believe that that, that there might be some understanding that that happened. Um but I don't, I don't know that I've seen that in writing.
Yeah, I think Mr. Espinoza, as I recall, authorizing that. So it'd have to be someone other than Dave. The other two aren't current employees of the city, right?
It was Lauren, is there anyone on the land?
Yeah, we'll get to you in a minute.
Yeah, so that, that's the issue is the kind of this, who has the authority and, and
No, Lauren didn't. I know that that way we have just anybody in the city that's employee authorizing land use.
And I, I, we haven't gone through Lauren's emails, so if there's a, an email or something out there that says that, that I mean, that might help the council in, in helping resolve this, but I still think the ultimate resolution is and similarly to the key situation where there has to be uh something that happens, whether the, the city says, no, we won't let you, so the keys have to move their shed, or Mr. Willis has to move his stuff. But um ultimately, I think what the council's indicated in the past is we're either, we're either gonna do it the right way and authorize it, or we're not gonna allow it, and people need to remove the improvements. So that's kind of the direction we're headed on this one too.
Okay, thank you. I think uh the discussion we had is some degree of consistency. Uh so we're not getting accused of selective enforcement. I do recall we had a visit down, we had a city, uh citizen that wanted to extend his yard back uh of Long Park area. So we do have some precedent, but let's, let's hear from the applicant. This point in time, if he has anything you'd like us to be aware of.
I am applicant, I'm Clint Willis, and I live at, at two thirty four east, thirty-nine hundred north. So I came in, so the story is, and that's kind of what I documented, was I did come in here and I got guided downstairs to, I think the older gentleman that is now retired. And so he said he was okay with it, as long as public works okay, everything. So he sent me over to talk to David Espinoza. And so at that point, I went to David Espinoza, uh showing her everything, that's where the text messages come in. Right, he said, okay, send me this. After that, it was verbal conversations, and he talked to Lauren, and Lauren said, you know, we met over there in his office, and he said, hey, if there's an access gate, I don't see a problem with this. So and that's where, as he said, you know, to me, that was the, okay, go ahead, fence it. She got me a double drag gate and get in, then he didn't see any reason why I would impede for, you know, the down, the property looked useless to everybody. It's just kind of a little thing coming off, so that's why it really didn't seem like a big deal at the time. And so that's why I came in and talked to Brandon, and I was like, it'd be something, it'd be great if we could just buy that parcel off the city. And then it's just kind of out of your guys' hairs, no longer a, you know, a liability. It's just, it really, unless you guys can see a purpose that that serves, um I mean, our request was to buy it, really, because we didn't know we had done anything wrong by fencing that in. So, you know, we didn't even know that until Brandon brought it up and brought it to my attention. I was like, I didn't have any signed things that I was told I needed to do it. So we had our verbal conversation, and that's where I got left at.
So were you unaware that you needed the land use permit to fence that in?
Yes, I was unaware.
What, what do you do for a living?
I do construction. So, but yeah, I wasn't told. I was, I came in here thinking I was gonna get guided to what I needed to do. And after that, Scott and these guys kind of said, well, here's what you needed to do. And, you know, that's where I kind of got frustrated and so, because I wouldn't have fenced it in if I would have, you know, and all that stuff. But to me, it came up because, you know, I figured, hey, let's buy it. It's, I mean, if you look at the big picture of it, that whole chunk is just I don't know if you guys have a use for it, but I mean, me personally, I, I would rather maintain it and have it look nice than just weeds, you know? And that's where everybody else and everybody is at this point too. They'd rather have it landscaped nice and look good opposed to just going back to what it is all over there, which is all weeds and
It reminds me, seems like a neighbor has complained about that being fenced in, so can cross the street, across the street.
Somebody complained about it?
That's my recollection, that that was one of the reasons it was brought to our attention.
No, that wasn't brought to, it was when I met with Brandon, they come in and talked about buying it. He's the only product to the attention.
Have been reached out by a member who asked and basically said that it will be sold publicly, they'd like have an opportunity to buy it as well.
Oh, somebody else did?
Yeah, every, everyone in the city, anyone who lives downhill of anything, which is everybody in North Ogden.
It's probably
Interested in buying something uphill.
It's because it's nice. So, so everybody on the south side of that street wants that improved on that hillside because it's just weeds.
So John, uh help me understand, if we were to undertake selling this property and we know there's others interested in it, would we have to go to public, what would we have to do here? So I'll tell you that's the answer. Just want to make sure the council understands what the process would be.
So the, the only state that, or the only rule the state has is basically you have, the city needs to show that there's fair market value for the property. The process isn't guaranteed, meaning you could, the council could make the decision and say, no, these are the only people we're gonna sell the property to for these reasons. But you would want to state it, or the council could say, we're gonna open it for sale for anybody who'd like to buy it. You just have to get the fair market.
Fair market value is determined by willing buyer and seller, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's how you determine fair market value.
Yeah, the, the lawsuit that, that kind of established that rule was uh Ogden School District uh gave some property to Ogden City for the mall area down in Riverdale or something here, Riverdale. Um and there was a big stink over how much they paid for it and stuff. So that's
Councilmember Swanson, I see you may have a question.
Well, looking at the pictures, uh Clint, help me understand, uh Scott, from what you just said, that someone to the south has expressed an interest in the property as well.
Correct.
The, the, go back, John, to the picture you were just on. That one, it, it, when I drove up there, as I've looked at the pictures, it seems to me that this part, I got my own little pointer. This little section right here is the eyesore.
Yeah.
That's where it's ugly as dirt. This portion here, right, this portion here is part of what? So the access road is really running right along this slope.
So all that riprap rock up there, I put that there.
Right, that's what I'm, let's go back one, John. So this is the riprap that you've put in. This is the eyesore piece here, correct?
Along that whole stretch.
Yeah, this whole stretch here, so.
Yeah, all the way at the end of the, of the road.
If the, whatever person down here were to purchase that piece, they wouldn't be purchasing this piece.
Well, the piece I would like to purchase would be, could I send that on? Well, you can see on that.
Are you suggesting the?
Because then it squares it off, and then I can
All the way across here.
Yeah, so straight.
Not just this area.
Down here.
Right, right there across that whole area.
Then that leaves plenty of room for all the access around that whole detention park.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Any other questions?
I don't see any, but it looks like you're off the hook with this question anyway. All right, council, um any discussion? That's number doubt, guys. So um I think it's ironic that the keys are here about not the same situation, but somewhat of a similar situation. And I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that when I talked with the keys, one of the things that we explored of potential was, hey, what if we sold them a sliver of North Ogden land to make them in compliance? But in talking with Scott Hess, part of the issue with that, not necessarily an issue, but the financial impact of it is that they have to pay potentially thousands of dollars in permanent fees to get it to that point. And so I'm, I'm not as much opposed to selling the property, but I, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we make it consistent across different people. So the irony is pretty strong that we have two people in similar situations. I just want to make it as fair as possible across the board, so. I'll bet you have more than two people in the same, same situation. Well, there's two here.
Like they're saying, you can go drive around.
That we know all over. I mean, the garage, I believe, on the corner of twenty-six hundred and Mountain Road, that Greenland, that's on city property. And we know it. So, you know, whatever the council decides, I agree that we need to have some sense of consistency in the application of what we're going to do and not pick and choose. Um and once again, I'll just remind, this might have been before you, the, the before was the fact the city's not selling any property. And that came up when I think it was the Masons asked to buy property behind their house. And we've had numerous requests, and I'm not saying we can't change that. I'm just saying that's the stance the council has taken at this point in time. I'm saying it can be changed, but I'm one that says, you know, if we're gonna change it, we need to be consistent in the application of what we're doing, so that we don't get into this selective enforcement situation.
Yeah, can I?
Sure.
If there's not an option to purchase, would there be an option to have an easement drawn up for that?
I think we have done something of that nature before. So that, that's something that could be considered also, so, yeah. Can John, can John comment on that, that what it would take to do an easement or a lease of the property, just so we know. I'm not saying that that's the solution for sure, but
At least would help, you know, release the liability of the city or an easement.
So it's, it's a similar document to a sale, it just is a different right you're transferring. So you would be transferring, it'd be simple, which is all the rights you'd just be transferring access or, or um occupancy rights, things like that with a lease or an easement. I mean, a lease is, is more close to like renting the property and with a termination date at some point. Um an easement would be usually something in perpetuity.
It's always been my feeling that if we have unused ground, it's never gonna be used by the city. I brought this up before, and I think the comment was, well, who knows, what will be needed and what will be used for. But, you know, if we've got all this land, little parcels laying around in the dark and then be used by the city, uh as long as it's not impairing city's ability to operate and serve the citizens. The question always came up is, well, who makes that decision of what's not needed and what is needed? So Councilmember Swanson?
If, uh, John, if council did decide to purchase, let's put this up for sale, given easement, uh would happen under an easement or the purchase or lease, uh we'd have to first declare the surplus property, correct?
Correct.
So we'd have to go through that council decision first.
With a public hearing.
With a public hearing, which would necessitate that we get input from the various departments, such as the stormwater uh primarily, um maybe exclusively, if this is a stormwater asset, correct?
I
Or is it a general city asset?
So it's technically a general fund asset, the way we transfer it. We don't transfer it to stormwater anymore.
Okay.
We only do that
We only do that when those funds actually pay for the property.
But Stormwater would be the entity that uses this property.
Correct.
I don't see water or streets or anybody else using that. Okay, and the same would go if we were to uh to do a purchase or a lease. Uh with the keys, correct? We would have to declare surplus property.
Yes, yes. That's where our policy is written. It's any transferable property right is a all public hearing.
Okay, and that includes an easement? Okay, so we'd have public hearings on all. Okay, thank you.
Good point, Councilmember Swanson. Councilmember Severin, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, from a from a real estate side, one way or another. All of these easements have to be taken care of because technically, if you went to sell your property. Uh, the seller property condition disclosures, you have to disclose anything known about uh an encroachment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
So you know, whether it's the Keys or whether it's Willis's or any other. Citizens in the city who may be approaching on others or the city land. I mean, technically, that's kind of a, that's kind of a title issue. That can be incredibly extensive to be resolved. You sell a property and all of a sudden the uh the new buyers discover a year later that. Technically, they didn't own. The entire piece of ground. We got a problem.
Yeah, definitely. I just had an individual who was uh. Being sold a piece of property and was told that the property. You know, extended up and then all of a sudden they they see a. A sign come up from the city, but the realtor was trying to tell him that this was part of his lot uh purchase. And so it's it's, John always tells me, look at the plaque. Look at the plaque before you. So we have before us, council, a uh. An item that looks like it need to be postponed before it could be acted upon. Um, item number six on our agenda, having to uh. If the city decides they want to put that as surplus property, we'd have to go through the process. So I guess I would be looking for a motion to postpone item six. Uh, the future agenda. Um, based upon the fact that we really. I can't make a approve this motion tonight anyway.
Mayor, I move that we postpone item six pending a further discussion by the council about the disposition of. Encroached on properties and um this council's desire to. Declare surplus certain properties um with the intent to perhaps sell it.
And you have a motion to postpone. We have a second.
I second that.
Second by Councilmember Severin, a further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. So Clint, looks like uh. Will outline, have further discussion in council on declaration of surplus property. And the process that we have to go through.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds good.
Thank you for joining us today. Okay, uh, Mr. Bell, you're gonna talk to us tonight about an action. An ordinance to revise the trailer parking standards.
Evening, Mayor, members and council, uh. So this is a, the first, uh, this is a legislative item relating to land use, uh, land use issues, the first of that kind. So I'm going to go ahead and just read the legislative decision type statement. Uh, the planning commission acts as a recommend body to the city council on legislative matters relating to land use issues. The. City has wide discretion in taking legislative action. Examples of legislative actions are. General plan zoning map and land use text amendments. Uh legislative actions require that the planning commission give a recommendation to the city council. Typically, the criteria for making a decision related to a legislative matter require compatibility with the general plan and existing codes. Uh, I'll just state that this is probably the most simple item that I've brought to the council on my time in the city. On what we're essentially proposing is a deletion of text. Um, so the uh. The police department has uh been reviewing the code regarding parking of trailers in the. Uh, street or in other words, the public right of way. Uh, the police chief who's here with us tonight requested that the planning department work. With uh his department to propose an adjustment to regulations in city code. By in title eleven, which is the zoning section of the code and um wanted to make sure that they're consistent. Uh, state law specifies that uh. Law enforcement has authority over parking in public rightways. Given that fact, the staff came to the conclusion that the best way to address. Um, this provision in title eleven to make it consistent with uh title seven, which law enforcement is. Responsible for overseeing is to delete the portion in title eleven. So um. John, could you pull up the actual proposed ordinance amendment? What we're proposing is that there's a section of uh title eleven that regulates. Um, on-street parking for uh motorhomes, travel trailers, camping trailers, other trailers and boats. Um, and that since this issue is already addressed in title seven, that it be. Uh, removed from title eleven. Uh, there would be a portion of the same provision that would remain. It's. Uh, this is eleven dash nine M dash twenty-one, A, uh, one D. Um, there's a sentence that would still remain regarding um parking in multifamily development, uh, parking areas. And there's nothing in the general plan that was determined to pertain to this issue. Uh, generally, we ordinances are or adjustments to the ordinances are um compared to the general plan as to whether they're. Um, they're compatible with and supportive of the principles in the general plan. Uh, this instead came from the police department who um is requesting this uh adjustment to title eleven. Uh, and so the planning commission um. Recommend the adoption of this ordinance amendment in a five to zero vote. Uh, and the intent of the adjustment again is to enable title eleven to be more compliant with Utah State Code by eliminating. Language in title eleven that is redundant of language addressing the same issue. Uh, of on-street parking in title seven city code. So just very specifically, we're deleting um. About six or seven uh lines, uh, two or three sentences. Um, in the previously cited uh provision of city code regarding parking since society addressed title seven.
And is the language exactly the same in title seven?
I don't know that's exactly the same, but it's um.
Substance, it's the same.
Yes, and and they're working on some, I believe they're working on some minor amendments to that. I'm gonna clarify sometimes it became cross, but um it's it's already addressed mostly to their satisfaction or fully to their satisfaction. There's so. Are there other questions for myself?
Chief, did you want to make any comments? You okay with this? You good?
Yeah, maybe clarify some.
So the, there was a difference in the language between title seven and eleven. Uh, which actually there was some contradiction, which is how this problem came to us. A resident actually pointed it out. In title seven, uh, specific individual parking a trailer was okay. In title eleven. Yeah, he wasn't. And so we can't really have that kind of contradiction to effectively enforce it so. By removing it from eleven, we go back to seven, which is what the police department has always enforced as part of parking on a public rightway. Which I believe is the council's wish, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Alright, uh, council, you've heard from the chief, you've heard from Brandon, you may have a recommendation. I think the change in the ordinance. Is on the screen here. John, you've counseled us to making changes on the run, uh. Anything in order here that you feel is adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Council, you have a uh. A request to change ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. Trailer parking standards, remove language that's in provision uh in provision title eleven. According to Brandon, it's already addressed in. Uh, title seven, the city code confirmed by our chief. So I'd be looking for a motion. To approve that amendment.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two revising the trailer parking standards as noted.
Thank you. We have a second. Second by Councilmember Exstrom. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go with a roll call vote. Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
The uh ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two is approved by motion unanimously. We'll now move on to item number eight. Our agenda, this will be led by John Call, our city manager and attorney. And he'll be discussing when the action to consider resolution to appropriate, appropriate unclaimed property. John?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So this is, council, this is essentially the same thing that you did about a month ago. Uh, what we found is that we did not, in the exhibit. That was attached to it, um identify the items that the city would keep. Or sell and use the proceeds from um for city, for police items. So a good example is. Uh, let's go to the first one, uh, some jack stands. Um, so those the city actually has could see some use for over in the shop. So we will take those that were found items. Or lost items and convert them to city use. In order to do that, the the resolution just needed a few extra words. It would indicate that, but there's things um in here, some tools, uh. Corona brand loppers. I thought that was an interesting description. There was things like candlesticks, so those are things that are out on the road, nothing that public works can use. But so it's just the the state code's really specific, and so we felt it was best to come back and identify the list again and say, these are the things we're keeping. Um, or technically, as we appropriate the city as we can keep it or sell it. Um, and the the purposes would be um to um. To for the idea of anything that's sold, the money would be going towards uh fitness equipment for the police building. Um, again, trying to meet that goal of not putting uh tax dollars towards that, but using donations. Other things and the chief and his team have already got significant number of donations. For that um equipment and money. Um, and so this would help fill that. And then the stuff we can use. Uh, you know, builder, the building department use screwdrivers and things, police use it, public work uses it. So it's just stuff that really would end up. Going and just being donated or destroyed or thrown away. So. Uh, that's, that's what it is. Uh, nothing too exciting here.
Okay, any questions, council? John, I think in substance, we approved this uh previously. Hurting state that it's just. Identifying stuff, but we can't. Councilmember Swanson, did you have a question?
John, can you scroll back up to the top of that list? Um. But chief. Uh, you're not interested in the pink misty necks child spike?
I actually replaced that with mine. We actually, we actually. Uh, Scott is pretty uh knowledgeable about bikes and he went and looked through all of them to just make sure there wasn't anything of significant value. Um, that we could, that we could sell and to sell and use or cast to sell. Uh, and.
You won't see the chief on that bike. Alright, and I guess our chief, I mean, return to find her, playing on the bill?
Yeah, so if you, if someone loses, if you find property and turn it into the police, you can sign and say you want it. If it's not claimed, then we'll tell you back after ninety or a hundred eighty days and say, don't pick it up.
Alright, any questions, further questions, council? Alright, this would pertain to resolution ten dash twenty twenty-two. This uh would approve resolution to, resolution to appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve resolution ten dash twenty twenty-two. Um, approving a resolution to appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. We have a second to that motion. Second, second by Councilmember Dowpass. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number nine, which will be uh council uh department reports. Uh, Councilmember Barker is not here. Uh, true to taxation, hearing must not be going well. John, did you have anything you want to retire for that the council or citizens should know about regarding parks and recreation?
Uh, so Monday, this coming Monday is the city band, the community band. Uh, concert at Park to Park for the Music Mondays. That'll be the last Music Monday of the year. Um, the the trunk or tree, our Friday night will be happening in October. Um, we'll get you information there. I my hope is that we can have a city council trunk. We'll provide candy. And can even have some uh. Some employees help you build it, if you would like, or help you clean it. Um, and then we did, uh, just so you know, are aware, we haven't made any offers yet, but we interviewed people for the. Parks supervisor positions. This is the parks maintenance supervisor, the people in charge of all the home crews. And that those interviews were completed today and we're narrowing down the list of individuals for that. And Brian, or Brian. Ryan helped us with those today. Um, and it's a lot of internal candidates and it's actually really exciting to get to know a different side of people who work in the city. Cause you don't realize their work experience sometimes. You know, you just assume they've always been a. A water worker or whatever and they, it's interesting where people have come from and the skill set that they have that's in that little bag. They they don't use a lot, but you can see how they use it even in their current positions. It's a lot of fun, so.
Thank you, John. It's nice to know we have an interest in internal candidates. Alright, Councilmember Dowpass, do you have anything you'd like to report to us on building and planning?
Yes, um, John, can you share that document that I gave you? Um, so this is returning on your ask about building permits to make sure we have an idea as to how we're doing this year. So uh, let me explain it in a couple of ways. So. Uh, comparing fiscal years, we are definitely seeing a decline in revenue on our building permits. From last year, which I don't think is a huge surprise to anyone if anyone's been following the real estate market and. What's happening with uh new homes being built. Um, so the way that I've listed it out here is by revenue. Um, in the last fiscal year of twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. We had seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in building permit revenue. And that was between two hundred and sixty-eight building permits. And I only counted the building permits that were for either new single-family homes or new multi-family homes. So this uh, the revenue number does include solar and the smaller projects. But the actual building permit number only includes new homes or new multi-housing. So if you look at twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Uh, we have two hundred and sixty-eight building permits. If you look at the most recent full fiscal year that we have to track. We had uh four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue, which is approximately three hundred, hundred thousand dollars less. In comparing it between the fiscal year previous and only one hundred and thirty-seven building permits. So a thirty-eight percent revenue decline between fiscal years. And a forty-nine percent decline in the number of building permits. Um, that were issued. And then go to the year-to-date, just so everyone has a really good idea. Not looking at it from a fiscal year perspective, but a year-to-date. So if you compared. January twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-one. Uh, versus January twenty-two to January, uh, to June twenty twenty-two. This shows the numbers there. So. We have four hundred and six thousand dollars in revenue in that time period in twenty twenty-one. And in that same comparative time period of twenty twenty-two, we have one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, one hundred and thirty-one billing permits in twenty twenty-one in that. Uh, part of the year and fifty-one billing permits um this time this year. So it's just for an awareness, so everyone knows that. Um, things, things are slowing down as far as the revenues coming, coming in in that, in that department. So. Just wanted to give everyone an update.
Thank you. And you know, if you, you're reading things now, a lot of uh. Contracts on homes, things are falling through during the straits. Just remind the council, I think in the budget this year. Uh, revenue from all building permits was five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which will be interesting depending, I guess, on the apartments, some of the multi. Housing projects that are there, but uh. It's one of those things that you just. You just can't control, you see the sway there. So thank you, council member Dowpass.
One more thing, I can't remember if I heard it from you or elsewhere, but the. The starts on multi-housing isn't slowing down down near as much as single-family homes. So I guess the hope there is with. All of the approved uh multi-family projects that we have in North, I didn't. Maybe there will be some. Kind of, I guess you could say, big-ticket um projects that come through and help us out a little bit, but. I think it's just good to know where we're at because uh we're going to be. Before we know it, talking about the budget for next year, and we just want to be very aware about where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Just as a reminder, we do have, and John informed me that the developer down at the. Promised point. Uh, is going to be moving forward here in the next period of time with the clubhouse. And continued development of that project, which I think. Includes four hundred apartment units. I did hear from Rick Scan today regarding Cooperstown. Uh, their plan is to immediately start on that once the annexation process. Uh, takes place. We have had discussion with some officials uh on it. Uh, they're interested in sitting down, working out a deal. On uh property taxes to get that annexed into the city, so. Sounds like he's ready to proceed on Cooperstown too, so that may be helpful. Uh, council member Swanson, if you'd like to give us a little insight on finance?
Sure, John, can you bring up the uh? Sales tax. Information? Can you expand that just a little bit? We uh received our our June sales tax numbers. Now you can see that what was budgeted. In the twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two budget was two hundred ninety-seven, eight hundred seventy-three. What we actually collected. Was four hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven thirty-five. Um, fiscal year twenty-one, the previous year in the month of June, we collected four hundred three, two ninety-four. So for the year, we had. Budgeted a very conservative three point four six six million. And um. The what we've actually collected for the year is four million, three hundred fourteen thousand. If you can pull up, go ahead and scroll down a little bit, John. Um. Mayor and I and others were anticipating that the. Downward slide that you see starting from March to April and April to May would continue downward in June. Um. Uh, defining logic, I it it it's hard to explain why this continues to happen. Um, but you can see we took a a very large jump from May to June. Um, in sales tax. Uh, there are no major holidays, there's nothing. Out of the ordinary about the month of June for sales tax to take off like that. Um, you know, home sales are 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 screeching to a slow. Um, big-ticket items are uh not being bought as much. Uh, but it appears that the day-to-day. Survival stuff, food and fuel and those kinds of things continues to be purchased. At a at a healthy rate, um. I forget the numbers, mayor, remind me if you remember, but uh consumer purchasing. Uh, year over year was month over month was flat, but year over year was up like ninety percent.
Yeah, I think it's starting to flatten out, but those.
It it was unexpectedly up, uh, and and gave us a bit of a stock market rally late last week that is some fizzle. Um. But this is where we are, budgeting for this year. Uh, the green line that you see at the bottom is what we had budgeted for this year. The red line is where we actually came in for each month. What we have budgeted for the coming fiscal year is basically that we would match where the red line is now. Uh, we're we're not budgeting anticipating a growth in sales tax. Uh, we think that's the most fiscally prudent thing to do. Given the uncertainty. Um. The unpredictability, really, it's become just, it's just kind of crazy. Um, so that's where we have budgeted, that's in our budget for the coming year. We always hope that sales tax comes in higher than we budget for, we'll see what happens this next year. But we've been, again, very conservative in what we've budgeted. Um, for the year, let me jump back to that uh. That email, our our general fund revenues through the end of June are at ninety-eight percent of what we expected. And that's because we still have some BNC road funds that we haven't received for the uh that applied to last fiscal year. So that will balance that out. Uh, general fund expenditures came in at ninety-four percent of budget. So our departments did a good job of coming in about six percent under what was budgeted for them on a fairly. Um. Well, say austere, I I've, well, it was, it was a strong budget. It was a budget that uh. Uh, had the departments working hard to save and to be efficient with the monies that they did get. And they were still able to come in six percent under, so hats off to the. Departments for doing that, the department heads for their leadership, the employees for being creative and efficient in the work that they do. Um. And that is where we are at the moment, where uh for this new year, eight percent of the year has elapsed. We have one point three percent of revenues that have come in, obviously, because revenues tend to lag. And our general fund expenditures are at nine point one percent. Uh, because of some up upfront liability costs and things like that that we have to pay in full at the beginning of the year. And that kind of skews the numbers for the first six, seven months. And that's uh, that's where we are.
Well, I think if you look at that graph, you can see the narrowing between what was actually collected this year and last year.
Yes.
Uh, there were some pretty wide gaps at certain points during the year. Um, I think that's one of the reasons we have budgeted sales tax flat. Because we're starting to see some trend. In in that gap between the two and the. So once again, beyond our control, but. That's what we budgeted. Anything else, council member Swanson?
No.
Thank you for that report. Uh, now, if there's any further public comments. Tonight, to the time. John, anyone online?
No raised hands right now.
Anyone here? I see none. Uh, we'll move on to item number eleven. Uh, John, do you have anything you want to share with the council this evening? Um, you're a citizen?
Just just the things about parks that I already shared.
Okay.
We do have an audit committee meeting on Thursday at six P M here in this um room.
Okay, and you'll be conducting that, council member Swanson?
Correct.
Um, I'm, I may or may not be able to attend that, I've had something come up. But at that point in time, I'm assuming we'll have discussion about the citizen committee. And I don't know if Mr. Anderson will be attending. But we ought to make sure that we have that discussion.
I I've reached out to two other citizens as well and asked if they would be willing to participate uh on that committee.
I think we decided that would be a subcommittee of audits, so.
Of the audit committee, correct.
But I'm assuming we'll still have to approve the names, John.
If it's, yeah, if it's an official committee, it'll still need to be approved and then all the formalities.
A lot of committees of. Full committee, so. Thank you, council member Swanson. Uh, council members, anything from citizens? Council member Severing?
Um, I don't have anything from citizens, but. Just wanted to say, uh, keep spending your money in North Oldham. Right?
Correct.
Keep spending your money in North Oldham. And then the second thing is, John, I wasn't here the night that the keys presented. So I'd like to recommend that we put that back on the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. Anything else from council member Swanson?
Um, we're getting done at a relatively early hour tonight. Uh, after a a nature break.
Oh, that's eleven fifteen.
Is that clock?
Holy smokes, look at that. It is now, hold on, it's almost midnight. Okay, we're into tomorrow.
It is a nuclear bomb, and every now and then losing the signal.
I don't, I don't hear it ticking, but.
We go ahead and count. Move it fast, actually.
I I'd like to follow you guys up to your home and take a look. I I've been up there a couple of times on my own, um. And and I just have some questions. Okay.
Anything else?
Well.
For Exco?
Yeah.
Comments limited to five minutes.
I'm an alternate. But it was really kind of eye-opening to me to think about. Each resident moving in now in sales tax generator. I mean, did anybody else kind of get that snack up the head? I mean, that's, that's a little bit. You know, I could, I think of all, you know, generating sales tax. But with, you know, anybody that moves in that buys online is now generating sales tax. In our city. So anyway, I just thought I'd like emphasize that is is kind of like, you know, when these new people are moving in. They're paying for stuff, you know, um, and also I was really interested, I don't know. I I kind of like to get some feedback, kind of go home and and kind of marinate on this. You know, special acting district idea. You know, as we're trying to do these things. You know, um, I I'd like to, you know, I I'm kind of formulating an opinion, but I really like to hear what other people think about that. Because I'm glad we have some full chairs tonight, because I really like it when we've got more more heads thinking about some of these things that, you know, affect. All of the the residents, so thanks for showing up.
Yeah, and for those of you didn't know, I think about what thirty-three percent of our tax dollars, John, come from spending in the city. And sixty-six is an allocation. Last time I looked, it was about that, thirty-three, thirty-four. Currently sixty-six from the. The state, that's why it's so important when you look at locating these. Um, communities, traffic flow has a lot to do with it. Yes, we do get the population allocation. But you know, traffic flow has a lot to do with whether you're going to spend the money. And uh, I do believe, John, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the. Property down here, uh, below the Washington Boulevard on twenty-six hundred is closed. Because there are signs up there.
But they they have started marketing the property.
Yes, pretty good. So I I, word I had is the property has closed, finally, that's been a. Long time coming, and there seems to be some promising things that could come into the city, so. That's part of it, huh? That that piece from Washington Boulevard down to the. Uh, actually, a little bit further. Down there, um. So yes, that's the property. Okay, anything else? Seeing I look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, version, um, except there.